Thank you. I’m Vice Chair Robert Miller, sitting in today for our Chairman Preston Bryant, who couldn’t be here. For all in attendance, our meeting today is being livestreamed. And noting the presence of a quorum, I would like to call the meeting to order. If there’s no objection, the open session agenda is adopted as the order of business. And Agenda Item Number One is Report of the Vice Chairman, and I do not have a report. Agenda Item Number Two is Report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Happy New Year. I just have one item to report on. At our next Commission meeting, the February Commission meeting, the District Department of Transportation has invited the Commissioners on a field trip to see the new streetcar line on H Street and also the proposed Anacostia Line. So I’d just like you to mark your calendars. That will be on February 6 at 9:30 a.m., and we’ll send you some information on that. So in the afternoon at that meeting, they will also make a presentation on the overall streetcar plan and the overall initiative.
We will look forward to that. Any questions of Mr. Acosta? If not, Agenda Item Number Three is the Legislative Update. Ms. Schuyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Commission. Happy New Year. I don’t have anything to report.
Agenda Item Number Five is the Consent Calendar.
So moved.
There are two items on the consent calendar, and they are, just for the benefit of the public, Item 4A is the draft master plan for the naval support facility at Carterock, Bethesda, Maryland, and Item 4B is the Defense Intelligence Agency Headquarters Parking Garage replacement at Joint Base Anacostia bowling. Are there any questions from members on consent agenda items? Mr. May?
Yes, there were just a couple of things that I wanted to note for the record regarding the master plan, Carterock Master Plan, which is that there is, I do believe there is still some substantial coordination that’s needed with the Park Service, since we have two parks, one adjacent and one adjacent to that, that are both potentially affected by what happens here. There are a couple of items that I would mention in particular. There are concerns about stormwater runoff. There’s also compliance with the 1994 memorandum of agreement regarding the development of certain buildings pursuant to the last master plan, I guess. And then also some utility concerns. Now, all these are things that can be addressed. None of them are items that give reason to pause on the item that’s on the agenda today. But I would just urge that if there’s anybody here from the Navy today, that they take heed and coordinate with both Sino Canal National Historical Park and George Washington Memorial Parkway, who are the two management entities in close proximity. I know there have been some efforts to reach out to them, but it hasn’t quite connected. And for no, I had no, it may well simply be that the attempt was made and the Park Service was not responsive. It doesn’t really matter at this point. There’s just certain things that we need to talk about before it proceeds. So that’s all I have to say. I don’t really even need a response.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Preventra.
I’d like to lead my voice in support of the Executive Director’s approval with comments. There are a couple of specific requests which address, I think, the points that Commissioner May articulated. The Navy, the NAFAC folks are here and are willing to respond. I have a commitment from them that they will honor the requests in the staff report to include coordination issues and stormwater management, knee compliance, as they submit individual projects and so forth. I think it’s a good planning effort.
Thank you. Mr. Hark, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did, on the same master plan. Since this is in Maryland, and Maryland is covered by certain specific legislation that addresses environmental issues, the language in one of the requests talks about tree canopy. And I think in the future, if we address issues like trees, we should reference the state forest and delineation and conservation plans directly, so that it puts it in alignment with what is being done by other agencies outside the federal government. It would also eliminate the second request.
I see that staff is noting that comment, which I think is very appropriate. I think we had a motion to approve from Mr. Dixon, the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously carried. Agenda Item Number Five is the Old Post Office Building redevelopment. Staff presentation by Ms. Hirsch.
The General Services Administration has submitted a final site and building plans for the Old Post Office Building redevelopment. The Old Post Office is located at 12th and Pennsylvania in the Federal Triangle. Downtown Washington, D.C. is located directly to the north, and the National Mall is located directly to the south. I’m sorry. The project site includes the Old Post Office Building itself, as well as the Pavilion Annex. The Old Post Office was constructed between 1892 and 1899. It is listed in the National Register of Historic Places and is also a contributing element to the Pennsylvania Avenue National Historic Site. The Pavilion Annex was built in the early 1990s within the courtyard space of the IRS building. I’ll write a little background and context for the project. Here you can see some major milestones, beginning with Congress passing the Old Post Office Redevelopment Act in 2008. In 2012, GSA selected the Trump Organization as the developer for the project. And then, within the last year, the project has been to this commission three times. In July, the commission approved the preliminary site and building plans for the project, noting that we’re asking GSA and Trump to continue to work on the designs for the signage as the project moved towards final approval. And then in September, the commission approved a transfer of jurisdiction to facilitate the introduction of a driveway in the former 11th Street right-of-way between the National Park Service and GSA. Following the commission’s review today, the project will be also reviewed by CFA at the end of this month at their January meeting. So to review, through the redevelopment project, the Old Post Office will be converted from a mix of office and retail to a luxury hotel and conference center. This will also include retail establishments such as fine dining, a spa, and museum spaces. The Clock Tower will continue to be operated by the National Park Service. The project also includes two public plazas, one on the north and one on the south. The Pennsylvania Avenue entrance will become the primary pedestrian entrance to the hotel, and sidewalk cafes are proposed to activate the streetscape in this area. On the south side of the building, the C Street Plaza will serve as the primary entrance from those coming from the National Mall, as well as the Federal Triangle metro station. And as I mentioned, a driveway is proposed at the former 11th Street right-of-way, sorry, in this location here, to provide vehicular access to the site and also for the valet parking that will be located in the basement of the annex. So the final plans really focus on four specific issues: the signage for the site, the design of the annex, and the C Street Plaza and entrance, as well as the lighting for the building. The final plans address the commission’s request regarding the signage, and staff is supportive of the project in terms of achieving many of the goals and objectives in both the comprehensive plan, as well as the Monumental Core Framework Plan. So as far as the signage package, it’s a comprehensive package that includes three types of signs: branding signage for the Trump International Hotel, which is primarily located at the entrances to the building; signs for the new retail establishments that will be located inside the hotel; and then a few cultural signs for the Clock Tower. The Clock Tower signs are in, conform to the designs approved by the commission for the signage for the National Mall. And so overall, the signage is a cohesive package that is unified in its design and will assist with wayfinding on the site. So here, to begin with, at Pennsylvania Avenue, you can see an existing condition photo on the upper left compared to what the proposed design is on the bottom right. The existing signage for the Old Post Office in the Center Archway will be removed. This is not historic fabric, and it will be replaced with a floating sign for the Trump International Hotel. In addition, the existing green awnings will be replaced with new awnings for signage for the new retail establishments. The removal of the Old Post Office, the existing Old Post Office signage, was discussed during Section 106 meetings, as there were concerns about the building retaining its identity as the Old Post Office. And so, in response to those concerns, signage for the Old Post Office will be relocated above the center doorway along Pennsylvania Avenue. And so the proposed signage that you can see here is compatible with the historic building, both in terms of its scale and materials. It will be brass, but it also maintains the identity of the building as the Old Post And then to move to the 11th Street driveway, a monument sign is proposed to be placed in the driveway. This signage is similar in color and materials as the floating sign that we just saw at the Center Archway along Pennsylvania Avenue. In addition, the awnings will be replaced with, as similar awnings, that will be placed around the entire facade of the building for the retail establishments. And then a view down the new 11th Street driveway shows the annex as well. The annex will be renovated and become the hotel’s conference center and ballroom. New steel and glass canopies are proposed for both the entrance to the hotel and the annex. And signage will be placed for the hotel on the 11th Street, the entrance into the hotel that will say Trump International Hotel. The canopy on the ballroom, however, will not have signage. The only signage on that portion of the building will be to either side of the main entryway for the presidential or the grand ballroom. It will be placed on the facade of the building. And then, to review the types of materials that are proposed for the re-cladding of the annex, three types of glass are proposed. Along the main facade that you see here in this rendering, it will be a translucent glass with a marble veneer that will be backlit for a consistent level of illumination. Extra clear glass, as you see here, is proposed for the entry vestibule and the doorways. And then, an opaque glass is proposed for the east and west façades of the annex, as well as the area by the loading dock. So on the south side of the building, at the C Street Plaza, this will serve as the main entry for those coming from the National Mall and the metro station. A public plaza is proposed with temporary furniture to activate the area. The original historic shed roof will be restored, and it’ll be covered with glass, as you can see here in this planned diagram. Since July, when the commission reviewed the preliminary plans, the design for this area has been simplified. The flagpoles have been removed. Additional trees are being proposed for the adjacent to the ADA ramp, and the plan is to retain several of the Washington Globe light fixtures. Here you can also see a rendering of this proposed plaza area. There’s a monument sign proposed for the corner near, this is the intersection of 12th and C Street, monument sign in this location, as well as GSA is planning to coordinate with the Park Service to place a pylon sign on the south side of that plaza for marking the entrance to the Clock Tower. You can also see here the separation between the entrance to the loading dock area and the plaza area will be divided by, this is an existing row of bollards and light posts. This is another rendering of that entrance area. Signage will be placed at the center for the Old Post Office museum and Clock Tower entry, and then to either side of that, there will be signage on the historic shed roof for the new retail establishments. The doorways are proposed to be framed with bronze. This is in order to improve the proportions of the entryway. And also, the base of the building here will be clad with granite in order to provide a strong base for the, in a modern architectural vocabulary, for the building. And then also to remind the commission that the entrance along 10th Street is proposed to be used during special events, and so some signage is proposed for this area, just to mark the area when it is open for guests to arrive. And then also, at the time of preliminary approval, skylights were proposed to be reinserted into the roof of the building to allow light into the guest rooms. And these skylights are still proposed. The final plans show a slight alteration in that the location on 11th Street, they’re more proposed towards the center of the building. They were proposed for the south half here, but they are still not visible from Pennsylvania Avenue. And then the lighting design for the building, the idea is to highlight the architectural features of the building, so a warm light color was selected. This lighting accentuates the pilasters, cornices, and architectural details of the building. And again, this was a subject that was discussed through the Section 106 consultation, and the idea, or the consensus, was that the lighting should be, should respect the overall hierarchy established by the Capitol and the monuments along the Mall, but highlight the architectural features of the Old Post Office. And so, overall, staff feels that the refinements made since preliminary approval are respectful of the setting of the Old Post Office and will help to revitalize this historic resource into a luxury hotel and bring a mix of uses to Pennsylvania Avenue. And so therefore, it’s the executive director’s recommendation to approve the final site and building plans. That concludes my presentation. There are representatives from GSA and the Trump Organization also here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. So it opened up to the commission for comments and discussions. Mr. May?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One is that I recall from very early in the process, being informed by my staff that there was legislation relating to the Nancy Hanks Center or something like that. How is that being addressed? Is that requirement no longer there, or is it somehow being folded into what’s being developed?
My understanding is that the signage for the Nancy Hanks will be incorporated into the interior of the museum.
Right.
And so I would ask GSA if they want to address that in any more detail than that.
Brett Banks, which is the project manager for the project. As Jennifer said, the museum that the Trumps are introducing on the ground floor will incorporate the Nancy Hanks name and showcase things, and we’re going to work with your group, Peter and Parksers, to program that museum space.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious about that, because it was mentioned in the report. The next thing is that, the last thing we have from CFA is a review in July. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And so is there a final approval still pending?
Yeah. We’ve been regularly camping out at CFA and doing informal consults, not only under the auspices of the Section 106 process, but in our usual back-and-forth. We take it to them for final approval next week.
Okay. And I assume that everything is on track, and we’re not, what we’re seeing today is exactly what they’re seeing and likely to approve?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further comments and discussion? Mr. Hark?
Yeah, I think this is a great project, and I was intrigued by the night lighting exhibits. I thought that was a particularly appropriate and beautiful way of handling lighting of the building. So my compliments to the design team.
Thank you. I would agree. Ms. White?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo those comments and thank the team of folks who’ve been working on this for the sensitive treatment of such an important place, and addressing all the questions that we’ve brought up in the past. And I think the pedestrian area is vastly improved, and I agree, the lighting plan, I think, is really stunning.
Thank you. Mr. Preventra?
Several positive things about this project. One is the transfer of responsibilities and property between the GSA and Park Service was one of the positive aspects. The new curb cut along 11th Street to allow access to the vehicle or turnaround and access to the annex is, I think, a positive step. The exterior lighting, I think, is very respectful for the exterior architecture and features of the building. The annex facade materials, while there’s a little bit of concern about the level of lighting behind those materials, with the annex set back so far from the street, I don’t think it will be any kind of a distraction from the folks passing along on Pennsylvania Avenue. The signage, I think, for a Trump facility is remarkably subdued. I mean that with the best of intentions. Looks like the package is very well integrated, both the elevated signs, as well as the ground level monumental types of signs seem to be very appropriate for the site. Very few minor concerns. One is the competition between pedestrians and vehicles on the 12th and C Street to get vehicles to the loading dock and get pedestrians into the entrance of the building. There’s potential for conflicts, I think. In my experience, pedestrians typically lose in confrontations with vehicles. Parking, we would be remiss if we didn’t talk about parking. Sounds like the valet parking is addressed in the annex, but didn’t hear much about the parking that might be available for staff and any kind of, if our normal parking concerns would be addressed. And last issue had to do with security. It looks like, according to this proposal, that many existing security elements would be removed. I would caution and perhaps rethink that. Due to the high visibility of this facility and its location, not only to the White House and the Capitol Hill and many other functions in the area, we could easily predict, and if not expect, that high-ranking officials would frequently attend functions at this building, and trying to put in situationally derived protective security measures would be problematic if some of the permanent features are removed. So just would ask the design team to take a look at what they project would be.
What permanent features?
Security requirements in the event of, say, the President would show up for a function.
What permanent features are you referencing?
There wasn’t a lot of detail. All it said is that some existing security features would be removed as part of the proposal, but there wasn’t a lot of specifics in the package.
Huh.
Yeah, I think the plan is, the plan is to take the current queuing security, the magnetometers and all.
Oh, that, oh.
That stuff’s all coming out of there.
Oh, I thought you meant physical security.
Yeah, so that’s, it’s an operating hotel.
That, too.
Yeah, so I do, and you’ve seen the landscape plans and all that stuff in there. We have coordinated and been in touch with our security partners, both at GSA and with Secret Service.
Yeah, excellent.
We’re certainly, you know, we understand what the viewshed is from that Clock Tower over to the big White House on Pennsylvania Avenue and the other one down. We reached out to the architect of the Capitol, and so we’ve had coordination with them, and Trump is obviously, you know, more than willing to work with us, not only on issues like inauguration, but on any other security-related things that may come up. So we have coordinated those types of things.
Thanks for confirming that consultation with Secret Service.
Yep.
That should address it. Thank you.
Did staff or anyone want to address Mr. Preventra’s question about parking for staff?
My understanding is that it would, there’s only going to be minimal parking included for executive-level staff up to three or four spaces.
I saw something, it said something like 120 total in the annex. It sounds like that should be adequate for a combination of valet plus executive staff.
Right, that includes the.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Yes?
I just can’t help reflecting on the fact, it’s been alluded to, that back in the 60s, there were apparently demolition permits that were issued for the destruction of this iconic building. And had that preceded, of course, we wouldn’t be here with this project or any other project. And as Mr. May alluded to, Nancy Hanks and others with the National Endowment of Arts helped to prevent that from occurring. And also can’t help reflecting on the fact that in that same decade, if there had been a similar effort to save the trolleys, that it would have been a lot easier to get them back at this time. At first, they were so 19th century, and then in the 20th century, people said, “Well, trolleys will be 21st century.” So those two projects, I think, reflect cautionary tales of structures and of entities that may be worth preserving, which otherwise would go by the boards.
That’s perhaps a commentary on, if you live long enough, you see the cycles repeated.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion from the commission? I would comment that this is a very exciting project that will do a lot to reactivate, to activate Pennsylvania Avenue, particularly in the evening. I walked along there, and it’s a little bit foreboding. It’s dark, appropriate, so, because you want to see the Capitol and the Treasury and everything. But this project is going to do a lot to help the city and the region, and I compliment GSA and everybody who’s worked on it. Did Ms. White want to say something further?
Yes, and I don’t usually do this kind of thing, as you know. But, you know, they’re attaboys all around, to the Trump Organization, to GSA. I can’t, there’s a list so long of people who have had their hands on this project, and it’s been a long, hard slog. And I am so looking forward to going to that opening. I’m looking for a dress now.
Do you want to make a motion to?
Motion. I’m making the motion.
Do you have a motion to approve? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item, Agenda Item is 5B, the Southwest Programmatic Concept and Interim Banneker Connection for 10th Street Southwest and Banneker Park. We have a presentation from Ms. Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Commission. NCPC staff, on behalf of the Southwest Eco-District Task Force, is presenting the 10th Street Programmatic Concept and Interim Banneker Connection concepts to you today. We are seeking your favorable comments on the concepts and direction on how to use these concepts in the future. As you know, a year ago, you accepted the Southwest Eco-District Plan, and one of the key recommendations in this plan is the connection from the National Mall to Banneker Park and down to the waterfront. These concepts are not only very important in terms of realizing the Southwest Eco-District vision, but they’re also very timely in terms of a lot of the work that’s underway in the area today. The study area for the 10th Street concept is shown here in red. It’s from Independence Avenue out to Banneker Park. And the purpose of this concept is to identify a right-of-way, the actual right-of-way for 10th Street, proposed right-of-way, and the stormwater management, the parking lanes, the sidewalk dimensions, and the median dimensions, and then to also develop a programmatic concept for phased improvements for 10th Street. And the study area for the Banneker Park interim connection is what’s shown in blue here. It largely focuses on the western side of Banneker Park, but we’re also proposing improvements to the existing asphalt path on the eastern side of Banneker Park. And the purpose of this concept is to provide an interim connection, a pedestrian aesthetically pleasing connection from the top of Banneker Park down to the waterfront. So as I mentioned, there is a lot underway. GSA is still moving forward with their Federal Triangle South Initiative for the area, to revitalize the area outlined in blue here, and they still intend on releasing an RFQ or RFP in the near future. We believe that the work that we’ve done for the 10th Street concept will help to inform that RFP or that RFQ. And we’ve been coordinating with JBG, who also is in the early stages of designing their building at the Long芳 Plaza complex, which you saw at the information presentation last June. They have proposed some ideas for the public realm, but they’ve also been working with us in terms of what we’ve proposed in the concept for 10th Street. And then we’re coordinating with the Smithsonian Institution as well. They, as you know, are undergoing a master plan for their southern campus on the National Mall, and we’re largely interested in proposed changes to, in front of what happens at the Smithsonian Castle, at the intersection of 10th and Independence Avenue, which should be the gateway to Banneker Park, but as you see here today, actually is not only not a gateway, it’s a very, very difficult intersection to cross. And so, as they think about possible changes to the Haupt Garden and some of the buildings in that landscape, we’re working closely with them to make sure that it’s integrated with some of the things that we’re thinking about for, starting at Independence and out to 10th Street. And then lastly, we are coordinating with the Southwest Business Improvement District, which is seeking authorization now, and hopefully will be up and running very soon. They have expressed great interest in helping to implement near- and long-term improvements for 10th Street, so we’re very excited about that as well. So as you know, a lot of work has been done for 10th Street or Long芳 Promenade over the past decade or two, starting with Arthur Cotton Moore’s Maryland Avenue plan. the past decade or two, starting with Arthur Cotton Moore's Maryland Avenue Plan. The district did an environmental assessment for LaFonte Promenade and worked very closely with the Washington Interdependence Council. They are, they still are actively seeking Benjamin Banneker Memorial in this area. And then it's been a cornerstone of NCPC's work as well, starting with the Legacy Plan, the Monumental Core Framework Plan, and most recently, the Southwest Eco-District Plan. So we're building on a lot of work. We are very grateful and appreciative for all the coordination that our project partners and the Southwest Eco-District Task Force have, and the work that they've done over the past year. Our project partners specifically have been the National Park Service and the District Department of Transportation, and of course, all of our key stakeholders here, many of whom are on the Southwest Eco-District Task Force. And then in addition to working with JBG, we've also been working with Pian Hoffman because they will ultimately be funding and building the interim connection of Banneker Park. So following the meeting today, these two concepts will go on different paths. The 10th Street concept work will be available to inform near-term improvements for 10th Street and planning projects, but more detailed work will not occur until larger redevelopment happens in the corridor. Now, the interim connection at Banneker Park is a little bit different. We will be taking the concept and the comments that we hear here today, in addition to what we've heard over the past year, and hand that work over to the National Park Service, who will be taking it through the final design, environmental, and historic review process. As I mentioned, Pian Hoffman, as part of their PUD approval, will be funding this interim connection. So over the past year, we've had five working group meetings, two task force, Southwest Eco-District Task Force meetings. We briefed CFA twice. We've had two public meetings, and we were here with an information presentation in June. We've had a lot of wonderful feedback, very constructive and very positive. In terms of what you'll see today, the 10th Street concept has not changed a lot. We've just defined it a little bit more in terms of character. But the interim Banneker connection has changed. We sort of switched gears, and so you're going to see a new concept here today, which I think reflects a lot of the comments that we've heard from both you and CFA and the public. So we're excited to show you that. So I want to set the stage for how we actually develop these concepts. We have a big challenge here, especially with regard to 10th Street, not only because of its sheer size, but because it's going to be built in phases as adjacent land and buildings in the corridor redevelop. And so the working group defined three project goals as we started out. The first was to develop a cohesive design framework for the entire street that will guide phased improvements in the future. Really, we just want to make sure that this doesn't happen. I mean, it will happen in a piecemeal fashion, but we don't want it to look that way. The second goal is to define how the character of 10th Street can extend the civic and design qualities of the Monumental Core to Banneker Park while also creating a space that is unique and flexible. Now, with everything underway here, it is possible that a good portion of the land, especially along the 10th Street corridor, could go private in the future, and that may do a lot for actually activating the street, which is really needed. But we really feel strongly that we need to carry through some of the character of the Monumental Core and the National Mall out to Banneker Park, which we hope will be a new museum or memorial at some point in the future. And so we, I think that our proposed concept actually recommends some ways that we can do that. And the third goal is to develop a programmatic concept that enlivens and beautifies the street and addresses the technical feasibility of the structure. We, as I mentioned, there's a lot of work that's been done, but this, I think, is the first time we've really gone in and looked at what's possible on this street as you move from Independence Avenue out to Banneker Overlook. You're on soil, and then you're on bridge structures, and so that has had a big impact in terms of what we actually think we can do there in terms of trees, landscaping, and things like that. So Otto Condon from ZGF will walk you through that. So actually, on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Otto, principal at ZGF, who will walk you through the concepts, and then I will come back up for questions.
Thank you, Diane, and good afternoon. If you recall, when we presented last summer, we really wanted to define a framework for 10th Street, which would be a unified connection from the mall to the waterfront, but also provide the opportunity for episodic experiences, especially building on Independence Avenue, the restoration or redevelopment of Maryland Avenue, that puts a potential cultural node, the idea of an urban plaza along 10th Street next to LaFonte Plaza, because it's really at the peak of the street. The street raises an elevation of about 14 feet, so there's a real opportunity for making that the urban plaza, and then ending at the prospect of the Banneker Overlook. The first thing we think is necessary is to create some energy on the street, get some people down there to start to enliven it. And with some very simple moves, we think there's an opportunity to, for the short-term improvements, first to create an entry. Some of it's just safety, some better intersection at Independence, some opportunities for some tactical urbanism to bring in simple features, some public art to really start to activate it, so that perhaps there's opportunities for putting festivals down there. You know, there's been a lot of talk that Pennsylvania Avenue is overloaded. Maybe the way to activate 10th Street is to decamp some of the festivals on Pennsylvania Avenue and start to bring people down to 10th Street, both near Independence Avenue to build off the energy of the mall, and then also near the bridge to build some energy off the waterfront development. Wayfinding is very critical to let people know that once you cross Independence, there's a reason to continue to move further. We think both with signage and enhanced crosswalks, better lighting, there's an opportunity for letting people know how to get to the waterfront, and also even a dedicated bike lane along the existing 10th Street. This diagram shows actually that near LaFonte area, you really need to transition the pedestrians to the center median because there are no sidewalks on the bridge. So it's key to really making some simple crosswalk improvements to get from Independence to LaFonte, then across the bridge, then down to Banneker. Now, when you get to Banneker, the interim connection can really help to make that last move from the bridge down to the waterfront. This was the plan that we showed a few months ago, and while we were trying to make as much of a universal connection at the existing Banneker down to the waterfront, it was, I think it was pretty much consistent comment that there was just too much there. There was a lot of concrete, and we were trying to fit too much into a small space to try to get into the 100-foot throat and down to the waterfront area. And so as Diane mentioned, we've relooked at the design of this, and as an interim connection, looked at how we can bring, bring the pedestrian connection down the west side of the existing loop. And again, this is an interim connection. You know, the charge was not to look at redoing the whole road network, but to really figure out how to make it work with the existing oval and road circulation. Make that pedestrian connection down to the west, and then also make a more gradual ADA compliant connection that goes the east of the circle down to the 9th Street intersection. And both of these connections were part of the PUD that Pian Hoffman has with the city in terms of making improvements. So a little closer, if you recall, we tried to do a zigzag in the 100-foot corridor down to the waterfront. Here, we're looking at trying to make a more gradual terrace steps to the west of the oval to try to weave it more into the landscape, make it a little more generous. And we've pulled it away from the road area so that we can provide enough room to basically landscape up against the perimeter wall of the road. This is just a little close-up. In order to make the transition from the median at 10th Street, we also need to make some improvements at the north edge of the Banneker Overlook, you know, in terms of crosswalks to make them ADA compliant. And we can have an opportunity to make a series of smaller terraces so that it's not just a straight shot, but people can actually walk, transition from 10th Street down to the waterfront and have areas to basically stop and actually, you know, appreciate the views all down the waterfront. And so this is the working concept of what we think it can look like. We still need to do considerable work on understanding some of the structure for the wall that's around the road, and we think there's opportunity for doing more green walls along that edge to really soften it. Here, we showed a little lighter on the green just to show the perimeter of the existing wall. The steps themselves can terrace down. We can tie it back into the soil to actually create the landscape to the west to create some lawn terraces so that, you know, there's an opportunity for this to be even programmed in the future, whether it be for sculptures or for other festivities. So that was quickly the interim improvements for Banneker. Should we just go through the, okay. So in terms of 10th Street, when we were doing the Southwest Eco Plan, we actually looked at four different sections. One, or three improvements or refinements to the existing condition, whether it be really building upon the median axis or what we call the rhombus, whether we should reconstruct the whole road and put the roadway down the middle, or whether an asymmetric section may be more appropriate to give a pedestrian access emphasis to the center and to one side and then offset the roadway. As part of the Southwest Eco Plan, we did think that, and what was part of the plan was to do the center median access, and because of the configuration and looking at constructability, we thought that was the best way to actually build upon the existing structure. And this illustration starts to show that below 10th Street, there is area where we could start to put cisterns for the stormwater management, and this would now require a complete reconstruction of the bridge in order to start to implement improvements. As Diane mentioned, it's not really a street. It's a street and three bridges. And so north of Maryland Avenue, we're building on soil. Between Maryland and the freeway, there's actually three different bridges that are together. And then finally, we get back to soil on Banneker. So this has really guided how we can plant and put trees on the structure. You know, the preliminary idea was to make as much of a uniform tree canopy as possible. Given that it's three bridges, three different structures, and soil, we can't really make a uniform tree canopy because of conditions building on the bridge and just the structure. But we did want to, as we looked at the study, we wanted to make sure that what we were designing as the concept was feasible, both physically and economically. When we came a few months ago, we presented three approaches, which were really to get input on the priorities of all the various groups we presented to. One was to look at more of a hardscape approach, which really is probably best described as taking the existing condition and trying to implant landscape. The second one was a softscape approach, which was really trying to change the character, really make it more feel like a linear extension, a green linear extension, linear park, so maybe it felt more like the mall. And then finally was the waterscape, was how could we use the stormwater to actually emphasize and exhibit how we could use water in the environment. So we did have, we presented these, as Diane mentioned, to several meetings, public, CFA and here, and got a lot of great feedback. So we have evolved what the design approaches that we've shown. We still think that the, recommend that the street section is 150 feet as existing. The existing median, which is 39 feet, we believe can be extended, expanded to 52 feet, which is really a dimension that can accommodate more programming. This would mean that taking the existing road, basically putting on an asphalt diet and reducing it from 26 and a half feet down to 20 feet, so that it can be a travel lane and parking in normal operating hours. Or if there's an opportunity to close one of the streets and use the median, then it could still provide two-way travel, as this diagram shows. Here, where the purple arrows are illustrating two-way travel on one of the roads, and the whole red box is where we could program for festivities. And the number of tents in this road is actually the Festival of India, which is currently on the mall. So, you know, it's another opportunity to offload all the activity on the mall and start to create some energy down 10th Street. In terms of the tree canopy, we still want to maximize the tree canopy, but do it in a way that's realistic with the bridge structure. So north of Maryland Avenue, we can really, because we're on dirt, we can get the biggest, largest trees, and we can also use some of the median for a cistern for stormwater management. There's, in the blue square, is an area within 10th Street where there's no underground structure. So we think that's an opportunity to actually take the bridge and carve within the bridge a center area that we could fill with dirt and the cistern in order to get large trees. And then the orange areas are really areas where trying to cut openings more than 10 feet by 10 feet into a bridge, it's kind of the breaking point of where it becomes Swiss cheese and not a bridge. And so this is where we could build essentially some bathtubs for trees. They're going to be smaller, but we can still create a rhythm of trees within the bridge itself. In terms of the stormwater strategy that we're looking at, we've been working on the report and the modeling. We think with a cistern, anywhere from 500,000 to 700,000 gallons, which is smaller than the cisterns placed in the mall. It's an opportunity to collect all the water that falls within the, what we call the watershed of 10th Street, reuse it for flushing, use it for building as a thermal heat exchange, also use it on the surface for treating it to make it for potable water use for interactive fountains, and also for treating it on the surface. And the schemes that we've been developing anticipate possibly about 100,000 gallons of water could be treated on the surface as part of the cycle of the system. So after we presented those three approaches, we wanted to talk more about what the experience is, and, which was really built a lot on the feedback we received from all the groups. And so we started to think of the street as more of an urban garden promenade, that as you're coming off from Independence, you're really, and because up to Maryland is an opportunity for the largest trees, getting an opportunity for real soil and landscape, that that could be more of a passive green. Then as you're coming up the structure, up to the feature at the promenade, that's the real, or at the LaFonte Plaza, the opportunity for the real urban plaza. And then cascading down from the plaza to the waterfront is an opportunity for a more informal cascade, informal landscape plantings, something that starts to really start to frame views to the river, but still maintain enough consistency so that you get a sense that it's still one street. So here are some diagrams from the ground plane, and this starts to show the rhythm of the water. We think that the magnet plaza along Independence, water can play a role in starting to draw people in. There can be a rhythm going up to the urban plaza, and then a more linear rhythm that goes down to the Banneker Overlook. This diagram shows essentially what the tree canopy could be. We're still trying to maintain some of the spacing of the trees and the linearity so that you get a sense that there's still some continuity. And in terms of permeability, this shows that near Independence, there's not, it can be designed to accommodate more programming. As you're walking up to the LaFonte Plaza, it's more of a linear park with maybe mid-block crossings and crosswalks, or end-block crossings in order to access the parks. And then at the plaza itself, it's really been designed from building face to building face. Then, as we're going down to the river, more opportunities for additional programming and permeability. And this starts to show in the pink where we think, you know, as a minimum, and this really needs to be developed further in terms of, as the development occurs and some of the, how the stewardship of the street can be defined so that it's designed to have a program that supports the activity. And so here, we're thinking that, you know, there could be a potential for programming, again, at Independence, at Maryland Avenue, at the plaza, and then other opportunities along the corridor, and then also, obviously, one of the streets. So in walking down the street, this is a, the upper left is a sketch of, if you're coming from the Smithsonian, crossing Independence, that there's an opportunity for really creating a ground plane plaza, maybe some water, which is a more vertical feature so to really draw people in. As you're coming down to the, between Maryland and, well, between Virginia and Maryland, we have actually an asymmetric green. There's an opportunity to create a little more landscape that's actually would be in the afternoon shadow, or, yeah, afternoon shadow, and also opportunity to create a little more green. So this would be more of a passive linear park. Coming across at Maryland is an opportunity for actually creating some visual connections down to D Street, because that is really where the pedestrian activity goes down to Metro, to the west, and a little more open in order to anticipate that there may be some festivals along Maryland Avenue. The plaza itself is, right now, it's relatively open. I think with the development of LaFonte Plaza and potential development of the post office frontage, really needs to be coordinated to create the right space and right scale. Here, we're just showing there's opportunities for, whether it's ground plane water features or some structures, could be developed. And we've actually said that, you know, there's an opportunity to look at the media, the space in several ways, but it really needs to be done in conjunction with the adjacent development. If it's not, you know, maybe it's just a median treatment that is developed, and the image is Millennium Park, it's really a... image is Millennium Park, it's really a, more of a linear feature. Opportunities for using more of an architectural approach to create the space, perhaps starting to include the right-of-way or even building, developing it from building face to building face. So I think as, as I said before, this really needs to be fleshed out further with the two, with the developments at the perimeter. Then as we step down towards the river, this is where the tree canopy will get a little smaller, can be a little bit more informal and organic in its plantings, the water can still be treated on the surface, and actually, these images are from the new development by, in Washington Circle, which is very similar to what we think could work. It's stormwater treatment on the surface, and there's cisterns below and parking below, so it's, these, I think these images actually reflect the, the potential quality of the space. Then finally, getting down to Bannaker, a little more open, and just, you know, this, this we left a little more open because there's still the question of how Bannaker might eventually be developed. So as Diane mentioned, we do anticipate that it will be done in phases. The phases themselves are, you know, really reflect the Federal Triangle South, RFP, the Maryland Avenue Project, which is underway now in terms of how can it be implemented, nobody else is looking at that in order to cap it. The LaFont Plaza, which is really more of a private development initiative, the freeway, which may be long-term, but is really critical to make that last connection to Bannaker. And then finally, Bannaker, which, you know, we anticipate would be done in conjunction with any of the institutional or museum, museums that may come down the line for wanting to be at that spot. With that.
Yeah. Okay, so, once again, in terms of next steps, the 10th Street concept will be available for short-term improvements or the planning projects to inform them that are underway, but we're not doing any more detailed design work on that until major redevelopment happens in the corridor. But the interim Bannaker connection will be handed over to the National Park Service with all of the work that we've done so that they can take it through the final design, environmental and historic review process. So with that, it's the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission comment favorably on the concepts and the connection at Bannaker Park and direct staff and applicants to use the concepts as a guide for planning projects and development proposals in the area in the future. And with that, I conclude my presentation and happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Condon, appreciate the very excellent presentation. One question, on the interim, you may have mentioned this, on the interim improvements, that's to be done in conjunction with Phase One of the WRF project, what is the timetable or generally the timetable?
The last time I checked with P. Anhoffman, you're probably not going to want to hear this, but it's about maybe 2018 for construction.
2018 for the interim improvements, okay, thank you. Does the, any commissioners have comments or questions or discussion? Ms. White?
I have a comment and a question. First, I really appreciate the evolution of these concepts, and I'm, I'm all for finding more public space and green space, so I compliment you on the urban garden promenade and the expansion of the ideas. I'm just curious, from the asphalt diet perspective, which is very appealing to me, what, what's the reaction been among transportation planners and, you know, reducing lane sizes of streets as a?
Actually, that's a very good.
I'm just curious, how open would that, would people be to that concept?
It's a very good question. What's interesting is that in parallel to this, the Maryland Avenue study is underway right now, and it's been very interesting to look at all the traffic modeling that they are doing, looking at projections based on actually the Southwest Eco District Plan too of the, of 2040 and how much traffic and pedestrian activity will have in this area. What's amazing is that even then, there is so little traffic on 10th Street. You see a bunch of cars and all the modeling on all the other streets, and then every once in a while, there's like a car going down 10th Street. So, I don't think that we've, I can't remember a single comment where anyone has had any objection to, you know, getting rid of a little more of the space of the traffic lanes. Yeah.
Mr. May?
Of course, it's not actually, I mean, it's, it's asphalt paver blocks kind of thing, so it's not really a great traveling service. I know I avoided on my bicycle for that reason, so maybe if there's a smooth surface, you'll get more vehicles. First of all, I want to thank NCPC for all the work that you've done in leading the effort and teeing off this interim connection, which we're very excited about, and, and of course, to all the other work that's gone into the 10th Street Task Force, and it impacts Park Service in a number of areas, many of which we haven't gotten into yet as well, and we look forward to all that coming to some fruition in the future. With regard to the interim connection, I, I would only make the observation that it appears likely, based on some of our internal discussions, that what we actually build out there as an interim connection may get significantly simplified, because what we show right now is a fairly elaborate set of construction and lots of green walls and things like that, which are pretty substantial for an interim connection, and we do want to maintain the notion that this is interim and that, and that the availability of the site for future development remains secure. Plus, it's, it, there's, we, we still have to go through the NEPA process and Section 106 process, and so it's, it, we could wind up with something that's, that's a bit simpler, but certainly, hopefully, as effective and as inviting. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart and then Ms. Stein-Gassar.
I've been part of the process from the beginning, and we're dealing with a, an area that was planned in the 60s, a lot of mistakes were made, and we're trying to rectify some of those with the removal of some of the buildings that are in inappropriate locations, opening back up streets from the LaFont plan. And this plan for 10th Street comes down to Bannaker Park, which in my mind is one of those mistakes. It may be approaching 50 years, and at which point it becomes eligible for historic merit, but in my mind, we're missing an opportunity to remove something that could be a permanent impediment. And I think that we ought to be a little more gutsy when we deal with this critical point of connection between 10th Street and the waterfront just below it. Right now, it's, it is a walled area, a kind of a big roulette wheel that is a bull. It's not really making a good connection to the waterfront. I would much more be in support of this if we were actually dealing with that problem instead of creating a temporary connection around it. So, I don't like the idea of a temporary connection. We're not, we're not really dealing with the guts of the problem here. So, I don't think I can support the EDR.
Ms. Stein-Gassar then, Ms. Wright.
Sorry, I haven't been here since you have the new mics. I think, I think it's a fantastic plan, and I really compliment NCPC and Onado on, on the mixture of both the soft and the hardscape, I like that quite a bit. And I, I like the idea, because I am one of those few people who drive 10th Street every now and then, I drive to work, and I tell you, when I see another car, I'm startled. They're on my private street. So I like the idea of bringing, making festival places where some of those festivals can come, because it, even, even in the, in the, you know, in the summer, it's hot and, and glaring, because there's nothing there, and in the winter, it's just cold and windy. There's absolutely, you see every now and again a pedestrian, and they just look so miserable. Is, is, and I know you haven't, you're not going any further into design, but I, I was, I was thinking about sculpture also as part of the landscaping, that not just trees, but kind of vertical things that would entertain children as they walked down it, something to look at and run to and, and be active. And I was gonna follow up on, how sacrosanct is the wall of the Bannaker Fountain? Is that, is it, is it just so monumentally structured right now that it's not being looked at, or is it part of the monument itself?
Well, which wall are you talking about?
Well, there's the fountain.
Right, which has a, there's a large retaining wall that supports that, and then there's the outer wall.
Yeah, the outer wall, yeah.
Okay, and so you're, you're more interested in the outer wall?
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, what's being proposed here would take out some significant sections of it, but not remove it entirely, and there's, there's a, a very different treatment that's imagined in these, in, in this concept for how that wall is treated. So, I mean, is the question whether some, whether that whole wall could go away?
Well, the, the few times I've actually been to the fountain, it's, it's a very odd experience.
Yes.
As a memorial, and then there's the outer wall that kind of encases it, and are they, are they interlinked as a memorial, or does one serve as a structural fountain? You know, there's something holding the wall to hold the fountain.
First of all, I should clarify, it's not a memorial, per se. I mean, it's, the site is named after Bannaker, but this is not an official memorial, not authorized by Congress as a memorial. As for the, how sacred the, that fountain area is, or in fact, the entire site, is something we are trying to get our, trying to determine now, and we have the, the, the landscape inventory, which is being done, actually, it's being reviewed by your office at this moment, and that's the first step for us, or for all of us in trying to figure out exactly what's, what's important to, to consider preserving and what's not. You know, this is a necessary process for us, and it may eventually lead to determination that it's eligible for listing, but that doesn't necessarily see it, seal its fate either. We have imagined for a long time, pursuant to the museum's and monuments master plan, that the entire site would be redeveloped, and whether the fountain plays a role in, or, or any components of it, like the wall, whatever is still kind of up in the air. I, I'm absolutely certain that we're not going to wind up with a road ringing that elevated fountain in the way that we have right now. I mean, if the fountain stays, it's because there's a new urban circumstance kind of all around it, I think.
Okay.
That's, that's just me thinking about.
And I just want to add that in recognizing that we were a little bit out in front of the process that the National Park Service is doing with regards to the determination of eligibility, we tried to stay away as much as possible from making any major, you know, cuts into the wall, so that, there is an existing opening here, and we expanded it just a little bit because it was so tiny, and, but that's, we didn't touch the rest of the, the wall.
Ms. Wright?
I think you should. I really think you should. I've been Johnny one-note on this from the beginning, give me that, I'm remarkably consistent. I, I just don't understand why we can't, we can't make, so, so I get that the process is ongoing and we don't really know what, I've been asking for three years, who, you know, do we have to keep the, the Bannaker overlook? Do, you know, and we don't know yet, right? But since we don't know, and people might need to have a little help imagining what it would look like if we didn't have this ghastly thing to deal with, sorry, why wouldn't we do another scheme and include what that might look like, so that people might be able to more, get a, a, a better grasp of the huge opportunity to, to, to right the wrongs? Because before you know it, we're going to have a problem because we're going to find it eligible according to, you know, some chronological criterion that says, oh, it's, it was the first in a series of really bad decisions, let's memorialize it. I mean, there's some really nutty logic sometimes that lands a site or a building on the register, if you ask me. And, and sometimes it's simply, as we have in the case of, of the LBJ building, it's the fir, but it was the first in the south, in the series of really bad decisions that constituted the totality of horrific urban development in the, in, in Southwest. Well, let's keep that. Oh, okay. I mean, it just doesn't make sense, and it might happen here. So, I, I think that, that, that taking a proactive, aggressive, here we go, aspirational disposition at this point would, or a position at this point would be a really good idea. That's what we're supposed to do as a planning agency. Imagine the alternatives, and, and sometimes, you know, really think big. If we, if we, if we do a workaround, this thing becomes calcified forever, and, and future generations have to look, will look back and say, why didn't they fix it when they had the chance? Or at least imagine it. People need help imagining big change, and, and I don't understand why we're not at least saying, well, here's, here's our, here's, here's an alternative in ca, in case the opportunity does present itself, that the, that we don't have to keep the overlook. So, sorry, I can't help myself, I'm with John on this one.
Mr. May, our sta, and staff, do you have a comment, a reaction to that?
No, I was just saying, I mean, if, if we want to imagine something more extensive, you know, I mean, go crazy, people try to plan things on parkland all the time. We get, there's no shortage of imaginative ideas that people want to suggest for the National Park Service to execute on land that we're responsible for. In this context, we really don't have a problem with imagining things more substantial, because again, we're supportive of the, of the 2M plan and the desire to, to create something more substantial there, which may or may not include the fountain in the long term, in the long term. I don't think that what we're doing here does much to affect that one way or another, and that's one of the reasons why I want to scale back a little bit what we're imagining here for this temporary connection, because I think it should still be viewed as something that's an interim connection. I think our original ideas were even very, very interim, but those are not, were not very practical. So I think the idea of doing something more interim is, is fine. I'm, you know, the idea that, that we should just, you know, we shouldn't endorse this concept at this moment seems a little odd, odd to me. I mean, I think we should endorse this, and if we want to continue to look at it as, as the Southwest Eco District develops, or as part of some other effort, and we are engaging in discussions about other efforts as well, you know, that's all fine. In terms of the ability to, you know, kind of blow this out now and then do an interim connection, you know, the, all of, this is all being paid for by the development across the street. We're not, there's no money for the Park Service to put toward reimagining this and redeveloping this in any substantial way, anytime in the near future. We have much more urgent needs in other areas, so it's just not going to happen with our dollars. So, but if something else comes along, you know, we'll, we'll have at it and we'll go through the process, and if we have to make a determination that it's eligible and, and it still has to go away, you know, there's a process for doing that.
Ms. Sullivan or Ms. Miller, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yeah, I, actually, I really appreciate these, these views and, and the discussions that we've had all along and, and the direction, and I think what kind of, and it's really summing up what Peter said, in my view, is we, we spent four years during the Monumental Core Framework Plan between 2005 and 2009, looking at many alternatives for this site, and realized that because there wasn't really a program, there could be 55 different ways to slice the apple. And so, we came up with a, with a vision that was pretty radical in the framework plan, and as we started to work on the eco district, the feedback we got was, that was too aggressive. So what we did with the eco district was scale it back a bit, look at more about how this still could fulfill the, the vision of legacy and 2M, but also be a landscape that would connect down to the waterfront. And that's when this opportunity came along with the private development across the street to build this thing. And so, we felt that it was an opportunity, because it could be many years out before we make a connection, and it's critical to the city, I think, and to the, the federal government, that we get some connection. We can build a simple staircase, and that, you know, I think what Peter's saying, which is kind of what this is, but because of the very difficult topographical and elevation changes here, it's difficult to make it anything but a staircase, and we were trying to make it something besides just a, a staircase. So I think what we are hearing is very good, this is still very conceptual, I mean, this is the concept that we really need to move. is, the concept that we really need to move forward on, if not, we're going to miss the opportunity, is that we want to make an interim connection between Banneker and Main Avenue. How the design evolves and ultimately what it looks like, we still have, the Park Service, we're going to get more information through the environment, or not the environmental assessment, excuse me, the historic, whether or not it's eligible or not, that'll inform this next step as we, you know, go in and start looking at cost and how it will be, will be built. So that's, I just want to provide that context, and this is definitely, we're here today to seek your comments on this, and this will help inform the future work that the Park Service will do in conjunction with P. Ann Hoffman. But I'd hate to miss this opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I have just two comments. One, I don't want the word to go out that we want to eliminate this Banneker presence here. Maybe that if we do something aggressive in the future, we might expand the area and call the whole new area a Banneker, because Banneker's significance to the city is important not to be taken away. I wouldn't want the word to go out, we even thinking about taking away that presence, that significant recognition. The other question I would have is whether the folks who are developing the waterfront, whether the, any changes here would help strengthen their programming and get more people down to use it. And maybe they would be interested in the old concern about cream, cash ruling, all actions made, that maybe they would be, I don't know, they would want to be involved, but it could make a big difference in their programming and how many people come down 10th Street to the waterfront and make it more functional. So, those are my two comments.
Thank you. I think they're, they're good comments. Mr. Prevention?
Couple of positive comments. We appreciate the further development of the design concepts. There's many positive and laudatory elements, the landscaping, the walkability, the event venue that's created, the extraordinary efforts to do energy and water management, particularly referencing the cisterns. Realize that drives both the scope and the cost up considerably, but it's nice to see those considered. The project collaboration to date among the stakeholders, which includes several members of the Commission, who have served on the Southwest Eco District Task Force, that has, what, 17 members in and of itself, I think has been remarkable. The development of the nodal type of design, I think, is, is praiseworthy. A few minor concerns, new signalization, for example, on Main Avenue. I know that there's multiple signals along Main Avenue as well as the Frontage Road. So if the, the city would concur with an additional signal, signal there mid-block, that could proceed, but it might be, be challenging. The multiple usage that's demonstrated in the water strategy, I think, is remarkable. A little bit concerned about how the landscaping, particularly the tree canopy, tapers down to almost a, a very conservative on the Banneker end and very flush and luxurious, perhaps an accommodation to make it a little bit more balanced, so it doesn't look like, once you get to Banneker, well, we're running out of money at this point, and that's why everything is smaller and less of, it could be a little bit more consistent. It gives a have and a have-not. It, it's a visual message. On the issue of the, the Banneker overlook itself, I think it's preferable to keep it as opposed to, say, replace it with something as, as germane as, as a roundabout. Clearly, it is technically and legally not a memorial, but looks like a memorial, is, functions as memorial, walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, et cetera, et cetera, so. The other concerns that we had was, we've expressed them in other venues where we talked about how restricted the view of the harbor will be once the, the harbor waterfront project, so that in some way diminishes a little bit the, the overlook. The couple of concerns that we had were about the water features. It's great to see multiple concepts incorporated, but as we know here from our recent, really adverse, hopefully historic, cold conditions, freeze, frozen fountains and pools and so forth are challenging, problematic from a public safety. In, in the summertime, unfortunately, there, we, every few days, you see somebody who's texting and walks into a water fountain and/or off of a pier or a bridge or whatever. Clearly, it's not our purview to protect folks from themselves. But there's dry options that are in very places. I think Georgetown Waterfront has the, the type of a water feature where that it, there's an underdrain and then the water immediately disappears and it doesn't collect on the surface. There's a couple of those around the area. Virginia Square Metro has, has one of those. Water features also, in my experience of about 30 years in this business, particularly over occupied areas, occupied spaces are, are challenging and problematic. But appreciate the inclusion, I think they're a very necessary element, but need to select the right type of water feature. And lastly, the, the little section of the overpass that goes over the freeway is, is challenging, particularly if these, if the, if the public event extend to that portion, a combination of highway overpass plus people plus alcohol is maybe not the best combination of events to concur, concur and occur in the same pace at the same time. Again, it's beyond the purview of the commissioners to police these types of events, but just a cautionary note about availability of venues that serve alcohol immediately on top of a very active freeway should, should be considered. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the Commission? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Executive Director's recommendation?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Is there further comments or amendments that somebody wants to offer?
I'd just like to make the observation that if the 10th Street corridor were separated from this, I'd be more comfortable, because I think they're two separate issues, but since they're tied together, I'll take them as a single entity.
Well, well, hold on. I have a question. So can you just walk me through the process about what happens now? We, we approved this, and then what happens exactly?
You're commenting on this concept, and then we are taking the comments and the concept for the interim staircase at Banneker and handing that work over to the National Park Service, who will then bring it through preliminary and final and the historic review and the environmental review process. So there's still a lot of process that comes with the 10th Street interim connection at Banneker Park.
Right.
Now, 10th Street is different.
Right.
It's sort of stops now, it's available to inform planning projects underway, the work that's been done and the technical, structural work and things like that, and it's available to inform things underway, but it will not go through further detailed design until some of the larger projects move forward in the corridor.
So, so the Banneker, the, the Banneker piece of the plan gets turned over to the Park Service, they take it through the gauntlet, and, and it gets paid for the, in theory, the construction is paid for by Hoffman.
Right. So you would see this again?
Right. I mean, we would see it through design development? Yeah. I mean, through the whole thing. So, and, and, and what's, what does that look like schedule-wise? I mean, when might we be looking at a, at a concept design for, for real?
I don't know, this, it depends entirely on the funding stream. So, you know, we're, we're not going to be able to do an environmental assessment or any of the other necessary steps until we have money to do so, and I honestly don't know when we'll get that money. I'm not, I'm, I'm just uninformed, it doesn't mean that it's uncertain. We may, we may be certain, I just don't know myself.
Ms. Sullivan responded to my initial question about the timing of the interim, as she said she consulted with the developer four years.
In terms of being constructed, yes, yes.
Yes.
Around 2018.
Right.
But in terms of working with Doug and Eliza, they're scoping out that work right now and having discussions with P. Ann Hoffman in terms of, you know, funding matters for the actual design work as well. So the intent is to keep it going forward, but I don't know the exact date of when they plan on coming back here.
So, so when we talk about an interim solution, what do we think interim means? I mean, what's our common understanding of, if this, if, if this, if we approve this and it gets built, how long do we imagine it will, it will live this way?
I can tell you what we, what we based our assumptions on was that this could be for about 10 years. But if it's not, or more, but nothing was, we were, we were assuming that nothing would be built here in terms of a new museum or memorial within the next 10 years.
There are, there are a lot of variables that would go into this. I mean, already, there is one museum group that's working Congress and has their sights set on this site.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know whether they'll be successful or not, can't predict that. But, you know, it, it could be 10 years, could be less, could be more. It's just, depends on whether the right development opportunity is there. But we're, we're exploring, we're not limiting ourselves to when the Congress passes a bill authorizing a museum on this site, it's, or a memorial or something else. We are exploring other options that might lead to this. And, you know, in the past, we've investigated building an underground parking structure for buses here as a platform for future development, and that was, that advanced to a certain point and then was, you know, we, we couldn't fully support it because it was too hard to imagine what could go on top of that, to, you know, to build for all possibilities of what might be on top of it. But we're, we're, we're having discussions whenever we see an opportunity to see if there's a way to change the future of this site, or build the future of this site.
Thank you. Can you share what group you're referring to that says?
No.
No?
Not now. But I mean, as soon as there's something we can share, we will.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the EDR on the table and a second, which is improperly seconded. Is there further comments or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Reluctantly, no.
The ayes have it, almost unanimously. This concludes the open session agenda, and unless a commissioner or staff has any other business to come before the commission, the open session is adjourned.